All right. Good late afternoon, I guess. It is the February 28th, 2023 Select Board Meeting here in Lakeville. Is there anyone other than Lake Cam recording our meeting? I don't see anyone. Right away, we're gonna go to number one, Select Board Announcements. So some of these become repetitive at this time of year just because they're important. And starting off with, reminder that dog licenses are due by April 30th. If you no longer have your dog, please call the town clerk's office to let them know. I'd also just like to add to that, you may want to make sure your dog's rabies is up to date. Sometimes the vets will send the information to the clerk's office, but sometimes you may have to get it yourself, so give yourself that extra time. Treasurer Tax Collector would like to remind residents that excise tax bills are due by March 9th. Burning permits are available online from the town's website on the fire department page. Burn season runs until May 1st. The town's proposed FY '24 budget is available for viewing on the town's website under News. Hence the word "proposed," it may change before we get to town meeting. So everyone that's looking at it just needs to be reminded that it may change. Probably not significantly, but it may change before town meeting. The town of Free Town will be holding a rabies clinic open to any residents on March 19th. Details are available on the town website under News. Any other Select Board announcements?
No, but I just under the town clerk's with regards to the dog licenses, I believe at town meeting we did pass, you know, something that anybody over the age of, was it 70, 75, that we were waiving the dog--
Was it 65?
I don't know, for a second, I know it's at least 70.
Yeah, and that information might be on the website, so--
I believe it is.
Yeah. Nice thing to remind folks, so if you're 70 or older, maybe even younger than that, I don't think you have to pay the fee. I'm sure if you can't find it on the website, I'm sure the clerk's office will be able to help you out. All right, anything else? Okay, we will skip, well, not even skip, we'll go right to town administrator announcements. Ari, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The town opened bids last week on for the John Pond Park building demolition. Five of the proposals were under budget. Staff is conducting due diligence on the three lowest bids before making an award. Also, proposals for the Gamache Playground are due this week. The outdoor stage pavilion is due next week, and we're in the process of working on the bid specifications for the Clear Pond Park shed and the old library ramp. Staff from the town and the State Department of Environmental Protection toured the former Lakeville Hospital site last week to evaluate site conditions and assess the property owner's efforts to mitigate asbestos on site. To date, the start building and superintendent's house have been fully abated and the main hospital has been partially abated. The property owner is also preparing a comprehensive plan to maintain perimeter fencing signs and to keep the building secure. Please to announce that transfer station stickers will be available for purchase online this year. We'll be more details on that to come. And the next meeting of the Select Board will be held Monday, March 13th at 6:00 PM in the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you.
Okay. If I can just add to your former Lakeville Hospital explanation, I think it goes without saying that that's a very important topic to us, to our town, to our residents, so we knew that there was a meeting, we were updated, and I for one will try to make sure that we give out whatever information we can get. Especially if it considers, you know, we had, I think, one staff person at that meeting or with them, so we will do what we can to keep everyone up to date, whatever we know. All right.
Just saying, Madam Chairman, Billy Inspector and the Health Inspector were both there, just saying.
Yep, so they were going over, like Ari said, I think, asbestos and--
They were reviewing the site and they were with Rhino, with the property owner as well, and the whole idea was to develop, make sure that everybody's on board and in terms of the plan for mitigation.
Yep. All right.
Just one thing, you said that our next Select Board meeting is March 13th, but our budget meeting, just so everybody knows.
Yes, thank you, you're right, you're right.
March 6th and 7th, right?
6th, 8th--
March 8th, I'm sorry.
6th, 8th, 6th, 8th and 16th, thank you.
So just everybody knows that.
I should have announced that, thank you.
As Leah mentioned, the budget, so give the opportunity of somebody to come in and ask questions.
That's right, so the budget hearings those dates, I was gonna mention during the update, but that's great.
Yeah, on the 6th, 8th and 16th, it's finalized now, right? Who's gonna be, okay, is that, can we find that on the website somewhere? Folks have an interest--
Sure, we can post that, absolutely.
Okay, because we meet with, for anyone who doesn't know, we meet with the different department heads on, you know, whatever evening. So if you want to know what goes into the DPW costs, you can go to the schedule, figure out what night we're gonna be discussing that, and come on down if you have questions.
Perfect.
I did know, I did see that there was some social media activity on the budgets, but I couldn't get a sense if it was on the operating budget or on the capital plan, so, you know--
Oh, we'll be discussing both as we go through the process.
Yep, so just, you know, if there's a particular department, come on out. You know, anyways, okay.
It's also my understanding, remember the last meeting we had, we were talking about the Free Town-Lakeville Budget Hearing? It's my understanding that it's on March 15th, so, so everybody knows.
Okay.
About their budget hearing that they're required to have.
All right. I think Mark Resnick, you are up. You hardworking guy, you. So this isn't, this doesn't really require a vote from us, but because it talks about a couple of the projects that we've had, I figured we would put it on the agenda, that way we could all talk about it as a board. But it's regarding one-stop grant application that you're working on. So if you want to, I've sort of divided, well, not divided, you've done it for us, but it has to do with the traffic light at Main Street and Bridge Street, some stuff for Betty's Neck, and then John Pond Park. So if you just want to give us an explanation, and then if we have questions.
Sure. So we're proposing to the application, submitting an application under what's called the One-Stop Program, which is one application process, but it's 12 grant programs. So under that process, the first grant program we'd like to apply to is the MassWorks Grant. And the MassWorks funds road improvements. So currently, thanks to Senator Rodrick's office, we have funds and are conducting a preliminary traffic study to determine whether warrants are met in order to install a light at Main and Bridge Street. And so although the report is not complete, they have talked to the engineer who's working on it, and we've met, the intersection needs traffic warrants for the installation of a light, and by the end of March, the actual report will be submitted to the town. So we'll be able to use that as justification for applying for the design and the engineering funds. So that way, after that is complete, we'll be able to apply for construction money. The second application--
There's a question, I don't know--
Yep.
How much are we applying for?
Last year, they were talking about the engineering portion being around $300,000.
That's gone up a lot.
Yeah, so--
I don't know what they told us last year, too.
Because last year was $200,000.
No, it was, I think, the number that Mastock gave us when we had that first meeting back in '21 was 250, so--
Right, but we got the $40,000 or $50,000 that we're doing for the traffic study, so we figured we'd need $200,000. And Mass DOT said it was 10% of the project cost.
I wouldn't advise lowballing the number.
What do you mean?
I wouldn't advise lowballing the number.
I was just curious, you know, because, you know, it seems out of, the whole thing seems out of line, to be honest with you, the way the state does things.
So as we move forward, so I'm here because the second of the last two items are for a submission of a notice of intent. So last year, I submitted one for the MassWorks, so that is a qualifying project, so I'm not gonna re-submit that. So, but when we put the full application together, we'll get a full report from environmental partners justifying the costs, so that when we ask for whether it's 250 or 300 or three and a quarter, it'll be broken out and we'll be able to explain why we want that money. The second, the next two items, we'll be submitting what's called a notice of intent, so we can get a, or an expression of interest, so we can get a determination of eligibility under one of the other programs, which is the--
Rural and Small Town--
Yeah, Rural and Small Town Development Fund. So this is the one program that actually allows for the construction of buildings. Most of the other grant programs, aside from the construction of housing, really are other types of site construction. So the first one here, the next one on the list here, is Betty's Neck. So we would be applying for funds for Betty's Neck to-- So they have a meeting room on the west end of the building, so we would do some repairs in the meeting room that had been damaged when the roof leaked. We would make it the room accessible, and we'd add shutters to the outside so that you could take the plywood off and open up the windows and use that room. On the east end of the building, which is still unrehab from when it was an apartment, we would install some bathrooms, a kitchen slash a stack area for concessions for when they do hold an event, office, storage room, there's a little extra space, although we haven't designed anything to lay anything out yet, and we would also make that end accessible. We would then, because of the bathrooms, we'd install a septic system, a well for water, and we would have to provide power. So I've reached out to Middleborough Gas and Electric about meeting with them about finding out we're allowed to run conduit to bring power up to the building or also look into a solar array with a battery in order to provide power for the building. So, and then other improvements would be to regrade the parking lot and the driveway with dense grade material, so it would have a better surface. Put a handicap walkway, probably with something like stone dust up to the building from the parking area, and then some repairs to the siding and trim in the barn doors. And that would complete that project.
Who worked on putting all this together, Mark?
So I've met with Nancy Yates many times, and I've been up to the building. We had a meeting with Ari and myself and Leah--
Yeah.
And Nate, I believe Nate's been really helpful.
Paul Neay as well, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and so we walked around the building and we kind of put together this list if we want to reuse the building, these are the things we need to do. In the middle part of the building, the barn part, Nancy would like to keep that kind of in its existing condition because they use it that way for events, things like pumpkin carvings and shows and other types of things. So that's kind of the plan that was put together.
Okay.
Okay, and the third--
I just have a question on the road, and I brought this up before. I know you're talking about the road that's down the bottom there where the parking lot, you know, is, okay? I brought up the question about the road that's getting to the building, getting down to the facility, and I know that's owned by, it's not Deacon's Cranberry anymore, who is it, Ari?
It's a Canadian company.
Whatever the name is. And I know that this was, I think last year we reached out to them, if I'm not mistaken, Ari?
Yeah, a year or two ago, yeah.
And they, you know, they decided they were gonna throw down-- they understand that they're responsible for the road. They understand they're responsible for maintaining that road. Well, it's obvious that that hasn't been done. And last year, they said, oh, well, let's throw down a bunch of sand, you know, and spread it out. Well, that doesn't do you any good.
Right.
So, you know, that's a, that's a serious problem, and that's gonna have to be, besides this, that's gonna have to be, you know, it's not gonna do us any good if nobody can get there, especially if we have an ambulance or a fire department, you know, trying to get down there to help somebody. So I don't know what we're gonna do about that, Ari. You know, we can set a meeting up with them, but now would be the time to do that. And I know, you know, we looked at the possibility of actually paving that road, and Frank went out and looked at it, and it was $100,000, which I didn't think was that bad, but I guess there might be some conservation restrictions or whatever they need to look into it, but that issue needs to be addressed and maintained. Because otherwise, we're gonna put all this money into this facility, and people are just gonna get frustrated by trying to get down there and using it, and they won't bring their cars down there. I mean, I've driven down there many times, because I'm sure Lorraine has too, and it's not a very good situation, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't own the access drive that runs across the bogs.
We have it right away.
Yeah, once we get to the woods, then that's Betty's Neck, exactly, so.
But anyways, I think that that's just as important. We're gonna try to address that this spring, because this is gonna take a while, even get this grant approved.
The approval, so if we get a determination of eligibility, we would submit the grant by June 2nd. And then we would, if we are awarded the grant, it would be in the fall. So contracts wouldn't be probably signed until around the first of the year.
It would start till 20--
Yeah, so then you have about 18 months to the end of the second fiscal year.
Anyways--
Is this a quantifiable application, or is it, I mean, is it open-ended? I mean, is there a limit?
Well, there's a max limit on the amount that you can ask for of $500,000. I don't think we're gonna get to that amount, but we will budget it as, you know, as much as we can. But again, some of these items are expensive.
Sure.
You know, and so as we work through a budget, you know, we'll ask for what it takes to get it done. You can't just ask for around half a million dollars and say, if we have any left, we'll return it.
That'd be nice.
This is great, I'll try to get this thing moving for two or three years.
Mm-hmm. Right. Okay, so the third applicant, the third item that we would apply for is to do some improvements in John Pond Park. I am going to the Parks Commission on Thursday to seek their approval for this work, but this is, much of these items have been discussed before with the Parks Commission, and there are actually plans that were proposed at one time for some of this work. So we'd like to construct a bathroom building on the site. They previously had plans put together for a small building with just two individual stalls. So we'd like to do something along those lines, but also with some storage bays in the existing building that's gonna be coming down soon. The Parks Commission had kept some equipment in there. The softball league also kept equipment in there, and there's also another league, a blooper ball league. So if we built a little bit bigger building than just for bathrooms that had three storage bays that each group can individually access, that would be probably the most efficient, best. So we'd be looking at trying to modify that design for that. Obviously, if we're putting bathrooms in, we'd need to put in a septic system preferred. They had planned on doing a tight tank there, but that requires costs of continually pumping, so we prefer to put a septic system in. The soils there are fair at best, and there's high groundwater, but I've spoken with Ed and with Jamie Bassanett about designing something there that can work at that site, probably up closer to the road, where you, along the side where you enter the driveway. We're looking at, I got, reached out to environmental partners, which did do a study of bringing potable water to the site, although I haven't gotten, actually spoken with the engineer on that job. They had a couple options, one about drilling a new well. Ed Cohen says that the existing well may not really provide potable water. Would need testing and upgrading, or tying into the Totten water, which runs into Blueberry Estates. So that's something over the next few months, we'll try and investigate and see which is the best way of providing water. We also look at expanding the parking area. Right now, it's, there's kind of a designated parking area and then a big grassy strip to people, but they don't park very efficiently. So if we could really design, and Jamie Bassanett has plans to redesign that parking area with striping and like maybe a center island so people can kind of line up on either end, we'll be able to design that so it parks more cars more efficiently so people won't park along the road as often. They'd like to add water to the stack shack just so people can wash hands and keep the place a little cleaner, and perhaps do some drainage improvements there as well. So that's, that's what we're looking at submitting for that project.
Okay.
Don't underestimate the site. The site's a problem with drainage and septic, because, you know, that's been a problem for years, that backfield floods out all the time.
Yes.
You know, so that's a concern. I don't know what the parking is about, but I don't know, if it's asphalt or whatever, but--
I think it's crushed stones.
It's just dirt.
Dirt.
So I don't know what he means by lining it, or whatever.
Well, just to reorganize it so that it's just not like, it's just a big open area right now, so people can park wherever.
Everywhere.
And if it starts to get busy, it's really inefficient, so if you can light it out--
You don't think people care, do you? Come here on a Saturday morning here and you'll see them all over the place, everywhere. No matter where the parking, they'll park anywhere they can, so. Just one question, Ari, I thought we decided that we were doing the opera projects, the water projects, that we weren't gonna do the water line to--
You're correct.
Okay, so they're gonna have to put--
The opera project as developed by environmental partners, and I guess Mark's at least talked to Paul Millitt about it, was to drill a second well, which would be an irrigation well and convert the existing well to potable water.
If it was possible.
And at the time, I, they had, Paul had, environmental partners had interacted with Board of Health and with Special Service, with Nate, and so on, and it was determined that that was a good approach, we could do that. So a little surprised to hear Ed saying that it wouldn't quite work out, but we'll work it through.
Right, yeah, that's a lot more money.
It is a lot more money.
A lot more.
It's a lot more money, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I thought it was important, too, because we do have, you know, a lot of folks saying, oh, we need grant writers.
Yes.
That's what we--
Some of what I do.
Yeah, some of what you do. And honestly, we have, you know, lots of folks, you know, the police, fire, you're working on it, Christina's working on grants, so there is a whole lot of grant-- you just don't get them all, that's the nature of the business, you know? You guys put in so much time in it, and nothing's guaranteed on a grant, so. But we have you here now. All right, thank you for that, Mark, update. So next, we have site plan for 13 Main Street, and of course, the Select Board don't have technically any voting, but the planning board will ask us for our comments, concerns, opinions on this. So I know Tracy has a large plan, if someone wants to see it right now, but otherwise, does anyone have any comments they want to offer?
When you're driving by the, you know, the site, it doesn't seem big enough for something like this, but-- so it looks like, just to go over, it's 19 units in total, 30, two bedrooms, which would be 38 bedrooms total. And I did have a chance to go into the office and look at the larger map, it was hard to read on here, but the only concerns I have, I know that the-- I think, Ari, we said that the water usage per unit is, what, 50 gallons a day for a two-bedroom?
Per person.
Per person?
It's per bedroom.
Per bedroom, okay.
That's usually 150, 50 gallons per bedroom.
So I'm sure they'll be coming back to us, you know, for that water allocation.
Yes, MG, they're dealing with Middleborough, not Totten, so--
They're--
Oh, so they're--
They're with Middleborough?
Yeah.
You sure?
It's a coincidence, right?
I couldn't--
I don't think so. The storage facility is Lakeville.
Tracy, can you pass the--
Yeah, we were trying to, I was trying to read the map, but I didn't see that, but--
They say Middleborough, but I think it's Lakeville. CVS is Lakeville.
So it's Middleborough Water, is that what you're saying?
Right, but I'm saying it's Totten Water.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I'm sure if it is, they'll be coming back to us either way.
Keep going, I'll find it.
So the only other thing, and I know that this is more of a, this is a planning board thing, but I've always been concerned about the line of sight when coming out of, you know, these places, especially onto this main road, and where we were just talking about that intersection at Bridge Street with the, you know, the traffic study, this is gonna be an increase in traffic flow, obviously, on that road. But it's just the line of sight, I just would like to have a note somewhere that they can just kind of clarify that piece of it.
I have to go to Mass DOT anyway, something. Stay high.
Yeah.
Mass DOT.
Did I see the water service specifically? I guess when I was told it was Middleborough. Okay.
Is that it for you, Lorraine? It is, okay, Rich?
I'm all set.
No questions? Okay. All right.
We can draft something with some of those comments.
Say that again?
We can draft something with some of those comments if the board puts them like this, too.
Yeah, just--
All right.
Okay. All right, next we have the annual election warrant that the town clerk, Lillian Drain, would like us to approve. So-- Let's see, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify, warn the inhabitants, so these are the following positions to be on the ballot for Monday, April 3rd, 2023. Voting that day is the afternoon, 1:12 PM to 8:00 PM. So-- I will entertain a motion to approve the following-- I will entertain a motion to approve the following, um, the following election warrant. So it will be one-year term, which is for one monitor, two-year unexpired term, one for cemetery commission and two for park commissioners. Um, three-year term, one for a select board member, one for a board of health member, one for a finance committee member. We have one board of assessors member, one cemetery commission, commissioner, two park commissioners, one library trustee and one five-year term, one planning board member. The board also moves to include on the annual town election ballot the office of Freetown Lakeville Regional School District Committee member as follows. Lakeville, a one, three-year term, Freetown, two, three-year terms. Uh, and to post this, serve this warrant by posting, um, an attested copy here of seven days at least before April third, twenty twenty-three at the following places. Town Office Building, Baldi's Pizzeria, Fat Cousins, the Clark Showers Association Bulletin Board, Connequit Regional High School, the Senior Center and Assawampset School. So moved. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, let's see. So this is a request from, uh, the DPW, Department of Public Works Director, to declare the following equipment as surplus. Um, so it says, this letter serves as a form of express for the select board to review and approve the surplus of the following trucks and equipment. These items were all replaced in previous years through the capital program. Um, following approval items will be auctioned through Auctions International. So I will entertain a motion to declare the following equipment as surplus. Uh, from the Highway Department, a nineteen eighty John Deere compressor D one eighty-five. Uh, from the Highway Department, two thousand and five Pelican sweeper. From the Highway Department, nineteen ninety Ford F seven hundred bucket truck. And also from the Highway Department, a nineteen ninety-four loader plow. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these?
Yep, the Highway Director says that we need to surplus these, we know it does.
Yep. That's one thing about Frank.
He won't give anything up.
Yep. So.
It's worth saving.
We just need to remember to remove these from our listing of the vehicles.
Insurance.
Or the, for the insurance that we do every year.
Yes.
All right, um.
Did you vote?
Nope, not yet. I was just going to say that, uh, the packet is posted. If anyone wants the VIN numbers or plate numbers, it's on the pa, it's in the packet. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you to Frank for always keeping us in line.
He asked if he needed to attend, he had a bit of a long night last night, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. Um, so we have next, uh, review and possible vote on a request to connect to Taunton Water at one eighty-nine Rhode Island Road. So this is for an existing house. Um, and they are requesting five hundred gallons of water per day. Um.
No chair?
Yes.
Five fifty.
Is that what I said?
I said five hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, five fifty. Um, and it's already existing. Um, I actually was wondering why it was five fifty, but, um, I received an answer from the building commissioner that, like what we were saying before, it's per gallon per room. Um, and it's just for an already existing home, so I will.
This means the irrigation needs to appear.
Yeah. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve this water connection application for one hun, one eighty-nine Rhode Island Road to connect to Taunton Water for five hundred fifty gallons per day. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, next we have a, a request to use, um, let's see, attaches a public way license application from Mullin Hill Christian Academy to hold the honor thy mother five K. on May sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, they filled out the application. Um, and since putting our new policy in place, I think it works really well. I'll just suggest that, say that. Um, and we are, have been charging a road fee, which we never did before, even though, you know, our DPW would go out and take care of the roads and, um, and this is a nonprofit, so they pay less of a fee. Everybody wants to know that. So I will entertain a motion to approve the, um, for them to hold their honor thy mother five K. on May sixth, twenty twenty-three. And in the packet, you'll see they have the route outlined, their insurance binder is attached. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, so we have, uh, before us some minutes to approve. And, uh, I would like to, uh, just get a word in on Tracy's minutes here. This was all budget stuff and the meeting wasn't easy and neither were the minutes. So I know you, uh, did a good job with that, Tracy. It's a lot of numbers, but. So anyways, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-three and February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Will you do these separately because I'm abstaining from one of them?
Yep, so I will make a motion, uh, that we approve the step down, make a motion to approve the February tenth minutes.
Um, Chair?
Yeah.
I think, okay, wait a minute.
No, it was a Friday morning.
Apologize, never mind. Disregard.
I wasn't there.
I think that's the one that, yeah.
So, um, February tenth, so moved.
Okay, um, that was just an opening and then we went into executive session and, uh, Sullivan Carbone wasn't there, so that was just you and me, Rich. Um, any discussion?
No.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay, uh, the next one is the minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections?
I have one correction, um, page two of the minutes, um, in the major paragraph, about quarter of the way down, um, kind of in the middle, it says, we have enjoyed, it should just be cross.
Enjoyed enjoyed?
Yeah, we enjoyed it, uh, A. enjoyed, okay.
Enjoyed.
And I think.
Is that it?
Okay, nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay. And Rich, any corrections? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that takes care of that. Anything under new business? Um,
yes, I'll just bring it up in the meeting. I know, um, we've been, well, no, it would be old business.
Okay.
I think it would be under old business, but it's not budget. I was hoping that we could, um, entertain a, uh, conversation about having a joint meeting with, um, Freetown regarding the MBTA communities, um, it, with their planning board. I know that they haven't voted or done, taken any actions at this point. I know that, you know, we have, and I know that there was an update, um, that we received that, it's just an email that we were, our application was received and that we're in compliance through, you know, our plan.
Are you talking about the zoning change?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about the, the station there, no, that station's done.
No, this is the MBTA community's zoning. So it's just, and I know that there's, and I'm sure you've had conversations, um, with individuals too, that this is bigger than just Lakeville because it does impact us as a regional school district. Um, and it'd just be advantageous to have a conversation with Freetown, um, to talk about how we'll approach this together.
Okay.
Don't you do, I assume that Freetown has, has sent in their whatever's required for them?
I'm not, I don't know yet, Ari, I mean, we, we can direct Ari.
There are very few, there are very few, there's, there's a handful of committees that were not, that, that didn't comply. I don't think Freetown's one of them.
Cause we just got a letter back saying we're safe until twenty-five or something.
December.
So do you know if they did that?
I don't know yet, no, I haven't talked to anybody over in Freetown yet, but.
Okay, so I do know that, you know, there is lots of folks talking about what we should be on the same page with Freetown on, but we haven't gotten like a formal request yet to meet with their planning board. So, um, I guess we can talk to them or.
Who's asking for this, Ari?
Me, Lorraine.
Just you?
Yeah. I mean, I would hope, I'm bringing it up so that, you know, we could discuss it as a board and, and maybe call those meetings together. I mean, we can meet with our planning board too, um, ahead of time and then, you know, maybe look to have a joint meeting.
Full disclosure, I received a, an email, so I was gone like Friday, Thursday or Friday, um, uh, from Michelle McEckern asking for the same thing.
Okay.
Um, my response to her was that, um, the planning board should, you know, the planning board, I, I, I referred her to, to, to her chairman and, um, stated that the planning board should request the meeting if they want to do that. And I, but, but vice chair, no. Uh, and, um, the, uh, chair of the planning board responded, he, in, in, he agreed that, that they, that the planning board should, this should come from the planning board and not do anything with it at this point.
Okay, but as a select board, we can request a meeting.
Yep, I do have, um, a tentative call lined up with Mark Knox tomorrow, so, you know, I could be talking to him, maybe that's what, you know, he wants to ask. So I will get, I will let everyone know. Um, but I don't think it's a bad idea to talk to our neighbors on some of this stuff, so.
We gotta talk to Middleborough.
Yeah. That was my next, that was my next thought too, yeah.
I'm open to the downside.
Um, so anyways, so, um.
And my, my feeling is, whereas, as you know, cause I said this in my email, that, um, we managed to buy ourselves a couple of years to kind of think this through. Which I think the time should be used and well spent. Um, you know, we, we were able to buy that really no cost, we just, Serpents doing a study for us and that's that. But, but the, the, um, that they'll, so we have until the end of twenty-five. So, you know, my, my advice to the board would be to, you know, think about deliberately, but, you know, don't, don't wait, but, but think about deliberately and, and, um, and use some opportunity to strategize and figure out how we want to move forward. It shouldn't be handled tactically.
Yeah.
It really shouldn't be.
No, we should definitely, um, so, okay, so you are making a request. Um, all right, and I'll talk to, talk to Mark. Maybe, Ari, you can talk to Mark Resnick, whatever, and we'll, um, we'll see if we can get something. The topics would be pretty much just the MBTA communities?
Right, and, you know, the plan that we're putting through and that, um, because it's in it, it impacts the whole, you know, the whole town, and I know it's a zoning issue which falls under the planning board. Um, but, you know, they've been good, you know, partners with us and it's just, you know, being on the same page and opening up that, the dialogue. Um, but with regards to our sister community, Freetown, um, you know, it's going to hugely impact our, our schools, um, you know, with the potential increase in students. So it's just a conversation, we just need to make sure that we're having it and that it's, and where people are made aware that we.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, anything else under new business? All right. Under old business, I believe we had, um, Rich's request to, on the budget, right?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if we could put it on the next few selectmen's meetings because there's going to be the gaps in between, you know, especially like next week when we meet with the budgets, you know, departments and so forth.
Should be an update after that.
Should, should be an update, you know, for the next couple of meetings anyways.
So we have the sixth and the eighth next week. Then we have the thirteenth, which is a regular meeting.
And the sixteenth.
So we'll definitely add budget as a, all the way through at least.
Yeah, the thirteenth looks like it'll be a fairly full meeting, so we'll have a lot of stuff.
Then you might want to consider about the school, you know, what's the situation? It's with Freetown Lakeville, you know, it was on the fifteenth, so I don't know, and I assume.
Yeah, I was going to walk through that, my little update here.
Are you going to do that anyway?
Yeah, I was going to talk about that a little bit.
And Old Colony is a whole different situation, we have no idea what's going on.
Yeah, plus we have a conflict with Old Colony.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Everyone stepping on my lead here.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm going to let you say it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's all right.
It's okay.
Um, so quick update, um, the, uh, as you know, the town has received preliminary state numbers, that's the cherry sheets, it was the governor's proposed budget. Um, we are down due to reduction in smart growth, however, I've had subsequent conversations with D O R. and with Senator Rodrigues. Um, and both of whom tell me that the number's going to be adjusted, which, as you recall, it was last year as well. Uh, the contact in D O R., Lisa Kurzwicki, told, uh, told me that, um, there was a, uh, a snafu within one of the other communities and they were working the numbers and our number's going to be revised. I don't know that means we're getting it all back, but it, 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 it bodes of some kind of change and I share that with you. Um, regional schools are very good news, numbers are up substantially. Um, Freetown Lakeville is up by three hundred sixty-one thousand, Old Colony by six hundred forty-five thousand. As you recall, the initial estimates that they gave us back, um, prior to, um, our, my presentation of the budget, all assume no increase in chapter seventy. So this is all to the good. Um, so at this point, um, on Freetown Lakeville, we're within about seventy thousand dollars of budget. Um, the, uh, as Rich mentioned, um, the regional finance committee meets on March twenty-first, I have, so.
I was talking about the regular school committee is holding a public hearing on March fifteenth.
Regional Finance Committee meets on the twenty-first as well, so, uh, there'll, there'll be, um, some information then. Um, Old Colony is now, um, well, basically the increase has been erased. Um, they, they provided us this, this morning with, uh, an, an updated estimate that incorporated, there's no change to their budget, it was all based on the revenue and they're receiving a six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue, so we're going from zero to six forty-five. And, uh, the, um, so at this point, the, they, without making any changes to their budget according to the assessment sheet we got, they, we would basically be level funding FY twenty-three in terms of our assessment within about ten thousand dollars. So, um, and as you recall, we had planned on about a hundred thousand dollar increase, so that's good news. Um, the, um, old, one little snaf, one sort of wrinkle we have is that, um, Old Colony has their, um, uh, budget meeting with their, their budget subcommittee presenting, presenting all this stuff on March sixth, which is a bit of a challenge. Um, I've, I've tried and I can't clone myself, so it doesn't, it doesn't work. Um, one thing, a couple of possibilities, we could, um, we could try to send somebody to that meeting, Todd or, or myself or something like that. Um, uh, Aaron Polanski has offered a separate briefing. Um, I think that's, that would be helpful and I appreciated the offer, although frankly, I really would rather have been in there with everybody else and cause I know that some of the other jurisdictions such as Akushna, for example, have some serious concerns about this budget, much greater than ours. Uh, and I, I would, um, I prefer to be in the mix with that, with everybody else in that discussion. So, um, yeah, I'm not sure how to ans, how to answer the question. Um, I, I'd really like to be there or I'd like Todd to be there. I think you probably want both of us, you know, in the budget here, here on the sixth. So my inclination is to tell, um, Aaron Polanski, thank you very much, we'll, we'll take the alternative, the, the alternate, uh, presentation and go with that. And I'll reach out to, to Jamie and Akushna and so on, do it.
Could we, um, suggest they start, cause it's the same start time too, right? Maybe they start at five thirty and we don't start till seven?
And I'm sure that would help because it's, it's not a remote meeting, it's an in-person meeting. Could get down, then get back, I, I, I just don't, I just don't know if it's going to help. So I, I, I think, I think I probably would recommend that we just ask for the alternate presentation. I mean, the immediate, if we, if, if I hadn't received, if we hadn't received a, a new assessment sheet from them with the new numbers, I'd be a lot more concerned about it. Um, we, we, there's a lot of information that they don't provide very willingly, Old Colony, which I'd like to get. And I would like to push hard for that and I can, I can certainly push it hard one-on-one. It's just, it's a little better when you can pitch on with others and then everyone else says, yeah, we need that too, or something like that.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, I, I, it, it's, uh, I think probably the better part of valor would be to, um, to go ahead and just agree to the alternate meeting. But, um, you know, I, I, it, it's, uh, I think probably the better part of valor would be to, um, to go ahead and just agree to the alternate meeting.
Alternate meeting? Well, maybe you won't be the only one at the alternate meeting either.
Possible, possible. All right, so I'll reach out to, if, if the boards are clear that, I'll reach out to Aaron Polanski and be with him that way. Okay. Um, so, so I'll take care of that in the morning. The, um, so overall, we're in, um, probably, probably appreciably better shape than we were even when we presented the budget, because of these changes on schools. Um, I, uh, if, if we can get, if we can get the, um, the, the cherry sheet number worked out as far as smart growth, then I'll feel even better. So, um, but I think we're, that, that's perhaps what we have at this point. We can give you a more fulsome update on the sixth. Todd will be, you know, I think he has, will have a couple of things to talk about, but not, 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 not too much. Um, some of which will probably be a little bit dependent on what happens in our executive session as well indirectly, that'd be one thing too. But, um, that's not a determinative item, but it's, 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 it's a, it's a variable. Uh, and we'll, uh, come there. I'm sure I'll be answering questions.
Okay. All right, anything else under old business? So are we happy to just keep it as an old business item, or should we make it its own agenda item for the next few minutes?
I'd recommend keeping it an old business item, because sometimes we don't always know we're gonna have to say something.
Yeah, okay, so we'll just do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think it's a good idea to have it on there as a.
Yep. Okay. Um. And then we have this correspondence. Do, does anyone want me to read it?
No, it's only Comcast.
Yeah, it's just Comcast stuff, yeah.
Um, does, does the board wanna continue getting the channel lineup updates from Comcast, or when they change a fee or they lose a channel? You still wanna get those?
Um, I do.
Okay.
Actually, if you look at your Comcast bill, it's on your Comcast bill.
Yeah, I don't have Comcast.
So, okay.
Yeah, but I'd like to know, you know what it is? Because sometimes people ask me, so I like to know what, you know, I mean.
That's fine.
I always have a source to go to, but, um, so, uh, I guess that's it, and it is, ooh, five fifty-two, excellent. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Federal multi-district litigation versus CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allergan, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically with PBA Local one eighty-five, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-two F. Approval of executive session minutes from fourth, February sixth, twenty twenty-three, and not to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. All right.